Call the order, the Michigan City Common Council regular meeting for Tuesday, November the 16th, 2021. We can all stand and do the pledge of allegiance and a silent prayer. And we will welcome the South Central High School students before we do anything else or forget it. Welcome. Hope you guys all get good grades. Ms. Nyla, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Ziegus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman. We have eight present and one absent.
And the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion or any corrections?
Motion to approve, support.
There's been a motion. Ms. Nyla, on the vote, please.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Ziegus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick. We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
And do we have any reports of standing committees this evening? No standing committee reports. Finance Committee.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, no, no report. We had no claims.
Thank you, sir. On the claims docket, November 16th, 2021, Fund Number 2042 Riverboat, claims were zero. EFT is zero. Fund Number 2031 Boy Development, zero, and total claims for this period is zero. Do we have any reports of special or select committees this evening? Any reports, special or select committees? Seeing that there are none. Any reports from other city officers or departments? Oh, I thought she was coming up to the mic.
Me too.
It was perfect timing. Okay, seeing that there are none. Ms. Nyla, are there any petitions this evening?
There are no petitions this evening.
Okay. Uh, on to communications. Ms. Nyla, are there any communications?
Correspondence. This first 2021 from Mr. Rodney McCormick, Michigan City Housing Authority Commissioner regarding items he is requesting for the Michigan City Housing Authority. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on November 2nd, 2021, from Councilwoman Angie Deitch regarding the ARPA planning process. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on November 3rd from Janet Butner, Promise Scholarship Director, regarding information that was requested at the last council meeting. Um, correspondence was also received on November 5th from Chris Yagelski, Mayor's Administrator, regarding reorganization of office usage at City Hall. Correspondence was received in clerk's office on the 9th from Mr. Barry McDonald regarding Lake and Blaine LLC, application of development plan for the major subdivision. The correspondence was received in the clerk's office on November 9th, 2021, from Duane Perry, Mayor Duane Perry regarding communication submitted to the City Council. Mayor Perry asked that this be read in its entirety. Uh, correspondence was received from Gail Nyle, City Clerk, on November 10th, 2021, regarding communication submitted by Duane Perry after the, about the City Clerk's office.
Okay, Ms. Nyla, are there any resolutions tonight?
A resolution by title only, supporting a commitment to fund the proposals for the 2022-2023 union contract between the city and local 228 Council 962 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Preszulinski and co-sponsored by Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
And the authors have something to add this evening?
Uh, Mr. President, what I'd like to do is read this resolution in its entirety. It's not very long, but I just think some of the, uh, uh, contractual items that have been agreed upon to, uh, to the council, they haven't had a chance to read this yet, and to the public. Uh, the title is "Supporting the Commitment to Fund the Proposals for the 2022-2023 Union Contract Between the City and Local 228 Council 962 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees." Whereas pursuant to Section 2-172 of Michigan City Code, the Michigan City Board of Public Works and Safety is authorized to bargain with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 228, Ask Me on behalf of the city with assistance and cooperation of the council's Labor Relations Committee. And whereas the Michigan City Public Board of Works and Safety has recently been engaged in contract negotiation with Ask Me, with assistance and cooperation of the council's Labor Relations Committee, and whereas the Board of Works would like to enter into a new contract with Ask Me for 2023, 2020, 2022, 2023, that would impose the following additional financial commitments on the city totaling $38,972.61. Item 8, increasing the on-call pay for street department workers from 45 cents an hour to 60 cents an hour, which would cost the city $6,156. Adding a personal cellphone use stipend for street department workers at 50 cents an hour during hours worked from March 15th to October 31st, which would cost the city $11,400. Increasing the on-call pay for animal control officers from $50 a week to $120 a week, which would cost the city $3,640. Originally, it was $3,600. Well, there should be $3,640. Changing the clerical vacation bonus to 3.5%, which would cost the city $9,219.89, and increasing the hourly rate of pay for the position of operator in the street department from $22.21 to $23 even, which would cost the city $6,000, $6.72, providing the three workers in the animal control with the same clothing allowance allotted to the members of the street department, namely, $850 per person, which would cost the city $2,550. And whereas because union negotiations with Ask Me commenced after the council adopted the 2022 budget, the city controller did not anticipate the additional proposed $38,972.61 in the said unit, union benefits in the budgets of the various city departments with the Ask Me Union. And whereas the council has reviewed the financial requests and finds them to be reasonable and supports the BOW entering into a new contract with Ask Me for 2022, 2023, that includes the offer mentioned, additional proposed financial benefits in the amount of $38,972.61. To the extent necessary, in 2022, the council commits to funding any shortfalls in the various city departments for said union benefits. Now therefore be resolved by the Michigan City Indiana Common Council as follows. The off, the offer mentioned where I have sections are incorporated herein and are fully set forth herein, and common council supports the BOW entering into a new contract with Ask Me for 2022, 2023, that includes the offer mentioned, additional proposed financial employee benefits in the amount of $38,972.61. And to the extent necessary, in 2022, uh, the council commits to funding any shortfalls in the various city departments for the said union benefits. This resolution shall be in full force and effect after passage by the council and approved by the, uh, mayor.
Are there any other comments, Paul Preszulinski?
I was just gonna move for adoption. Right. Uh, Mr. President, just a little more comment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The contract, uh, was taken to the, uh, to the union, and the union has ratified the contract, so the contract is ready to go. All the council has to do is support financially the contract, and the street department workers, or the Ask Me will have a ratified contract with financial backing from the city council. Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Any online comments? Uh, comments from the council? Councilman Paul Preszulinski?
I would, uh, like to, I am in support of this evidently, but also I would like to say, um, the city, I believe, we made a reasonable movement in, uh, some of these issues that were confronting people that worked at the street department and in animal control. And I think in a, a good faith effort that, uh, the council negotiating committee had, and, uh, I wanted to thank the, uh, Board of Works for, uh, recognizing the ordinance with the language in it that they're supposed to have our cooperate, uh, we're supposed to work as a team on, on these things. So I would move for adoption.
Support.
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Nyla, on the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Ziegus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, Ms. Nyla, on to the ordinances. Can you read the first ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending ordinance number 4598, commonly known as the 2022 Salary Ordinance, to increase the annual salary for the position of city arborist. And this is introduced by Ms. Ziegus.
And does the author have anything to add this evening?
Uh, yes, I do. First of all, I'd like to read the ordinance. It's really short. It says, "Whereas on October 19th, 2021, the Michigan City Common Council enacted. On October 27th, 21, the mayor signed an ordinance number 4598, which establishes the salaries and wages for appointed officials and employees for the year 2022. And more specifically, said ordinance established the salary for the city arborist at $44,000. And whereas the city is in dire need of an experienced and skilled arborist to handle the needs of the city and also to advise the Michigan City Tree Board. And whereas the Michigan City Tree Board has expressed a strong desire to commence the search for city arborists, however believes the city will not be able to find an applicant because of the low salary established for said, said position. Whereas the common council now finds it is in the best interest of the city to increase the annual salary for the city arborist, now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana, as follows. Section 1 of Ordinance 4598, the position of arborist, which is currently under the mayor's office, shall now be amended to read, "Arborist biweekly pay rate 2,399.12, annualized rate 62,377.21. All other provisions of Ordinance 4598 not in conflict with this ordinance shall remain in full force." And I'm gonna start my five-minute timer, because I would like to tell you some of the things that the, the arborist is responsible for doing, which maybe people don't know what the responsibilities are. So the duties are: develops plans and directs forestation and reforestation projects, maintaining tree inventory and hazard tree assessment for the city, coordinating the inspection, pruning, and pest control for all city trees, and conferring with architects and developers to discuss tree preservation techniques, prepares annual tree planting plan and prepares and maintains street tree maintenance plan and inventory, investigates and prioritizes service requests and prepares contracts for services, acts as a liaison to other city departments outside agencies and the general public in order to coordinate departmental operations, interpret departmental objectives, and solicit input, responds to inquiries, requests, and complaints from city departments outside agencies and the general public, supervises assigned staff, including interviewing candidates and making hiring recommendations, orienting new subordinates, planning, delegating, and controlling work assignments, establishing specific work goals, evaluating performance results, recommending personnel actions, keeping supervisor and assigned staff informed of organizational developments, maintaining discipline and recommending corrective action, and communicating and administering personnel programs and procedures, conducts research to improve knowledge of forest management, develops, administers, and supervises urban forest management plan, assists in planning and implementing of projects for control of floods, soil erosion, tree diseases, and insect pests in forests, drafts and writes, and enforces ordinance policy and procedures relating to arboricultural and urban forestry practices, writes and administers various grants that will improve environmental health and diversity, manages and coordinates specific tree programs, including Tree City USA, purchases supplies and equipment, maintains accurate records of work and departmental files, enters and retrieves data on computer, attends monthly tree board meetings, performs other jobs as needed. And I can go on, because there's several more pages, but I will not. Uh, but we are requiring a baccalaureate degree in biology or forestry or a similar background. And to, to think someone's gonna come and do this job for $44,000 a year is really not realistic. So I would like to have you consider putting it back to the average salary that was recommended by the salary study.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? State your name and address, please. Get when you get to the mic. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you, Tree Board President. Um, just, uh, real quick here. I want to make a public apology, and this is, um, Ziegus, because, um, when we found out about the salary that, uh, the defundment of the arborist salary, that the board, the tree board was quite upset. Um, we are right in the midst of trying to find a candidate and have the resources to put together a, a, or a candidate for the arborist position. And at the current salary, it is going to be quite tough out there. Um, we had negotiated with the mayor and the clerk's office and, uh, throughout the last six months to try to come up with, uh, the duties of the arborist. And we were all kind of in the understanding that the 62,000 figure was going to be our go-to number to try to, um, get a, a rounded person to take the job. Um, so, saying that, um, I'm very happy and thankful to Mrs. Ziegus that she brought this ordinance to you all for you, for your consideration. But we need to have the resources to choose the right person to get into this position. Over the years, we've, we had one, uh, fellow, which he was, it was a combination funds from the state and from the city to hire him to get the arborist rolling in the city. And then he subsequently went to the city of Milwaukee, um, which was good for him. And then we've had several, several other people who have come and gone, um, used the, the Michigan city as a stepping stone to their careers. You, the tree board and everybody who puts time and effort into teaching people how to do this job. We need to find somebody that's gonna be a permanent one for more than just 16, 17, 18 months. So, um, right now, the 44,000 would just be somebody would just come in and they'd be looking for something else to do in a matter of months. So I think we really need to sit down and think about this, um, to be in, to make it honest and be the right salary that's fitting to Northwest Indiana. So I'm saying that. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Laura Henderson, 510 East 9th Street. I'm also a member of the Tree Board. Um, I, I thank Ms. Ziegus for, for, uh, this ordinance, and I also support everything Mick just said. But I'd like to add that a competitive pay, as Ms. Ziegus is proposing, is necessary to attract and retain a qualified and competent candidate for this position. Now, we had a very qualified, extremely competent person in this position until early this year, and it's very unfortunate that we lost her. Um, so we need a decent pay, as Mick said, to retain, to attract first and then retain a good person. Um, trees provide a lot of ecological benefits, which most people don't realize, because you take them for granted. The trees are always there. But trees are not always there. They have a lifespan, especially when they're stressed, as they are in the city. And, um, we've already lost too many trees. We need to get on track and restore the trees, improve their health. Healthy trees provide great ecological benefits. They go well beyond their expense. So it's one of the best investments that a city can make. So I hope you will consider this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Tim Warner, 310 East Cool Spring. I'm also a member of the Tree Board. Um, I agree with everything that's been said at this point, and I thank Ms. Ziegus for, for this, uh, ordinance revision request. Um, I did some research just before I, I came today when I left my office and looked at Indeed.com and other job site placement services. The foresters in Northwest Indiana and down in Indianapolis are making up to $95,000 a year. We just can't compete. So that's all I have to say. They've pretty much covered. Thank you. I hope that, uh, you look into this and, and help us to get a, a new forester, because we really do need it. There were, on Maple, there were five or six trees since I moved there in the last 20 years that have died and been cut down by the city and haven't been replaced. And that's just one street. We have to get to work and get a forest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the public? Uh, do we have any online comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilwoman Dow, press voice.
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, uh, with the salary base at $62,000 that Councilwoman Ziegus, uh, introduced, is that just going off the, uh, salary study that was presented to, uh, the city? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And I guess I'll just make a comment that, uh, this is one of the times I really think, uh, it, it, you know, it's an empty spot. There's, uh, no other, uh, items involved. We're actually trying to recruit an individual that's not here. So it's not anything about past performance. And, uh, you know, I'm always talking about training and development of people, but where we're located, our environment is, is huge. And, uh, if we're gonna skimp on anything in Michigan City, it should not be the environment. We're depending on water, trees, streams, parks, fishing, boating, swimming. We are ridiculously dependent on that, and we, the trees in this town make it a beautiful city. I've been in other cities and, uh, you know, it's like a concrete jungle. That's where that term comes from. People just tuck, turn down, cut down the trees. And, uh, we can, we can attract a professional that would really love to live here. Um, and anybody with a biology degree. And even back in my college days, 40, 40 grand wasn't gonna get you a real biologist. So I, I hope we can, uh, follow through with this, because we do really need a professional in that spot. Any other comments from the council? Seeing that there are none, Ms. Nyla, but we read the second ordinance on first reading by title.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, third amendment to the city's internal control policy in Section 2-498 and Chapter 2 of the Michigan City Municipal Code, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And does the author have anything tonight?
Yeah, real quick, the, the ordinances, uh, we're just trying to upgrade our internal controls to meet HUD standards. Uh, we have money that came in that we could use for transit. We have to update our internal control policy based on things that they found on Indeed to be put in place, um, in order for us to be able to award said funds. So that's what this is doing.
And are there any comments from the public? Comments from the public? No online comments from the public? Comments from the council? Seeing that there are none. Snidel, can you read the third ordinance on first reading by title?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending ordinance number 4598, commonly known as the 2022 Salary Ordinance, to increase the hourly rate of an operator in the street department from $22, $22.21 to $23. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Preszulinski.
And does the author have anything to add this evening?
No, I don't have, uh, anything to add. I think it's self-explanatory.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Uh, comments from the council?
Um, I would like, uh, ask the author to put me on as a co-sponsor, please. And, uh, I have, I do have some questions, but I will, uh, I guess I could ask them tonight. Is, um, under this ordinance, should the, uh, resolution that we passed, should that be, uh, attached to this ordinance or verbiage in this ordinance to, uh, amend the, uh, sal, salary ordinance for the state, Yvonne?
Yeah, I don't know if the resolution has to be attached to the ordinance. Um, the, the, from what I understand, the street department has ratified this, and the Board of Works will be approving it. And the resolution was passed earlier that says that the council will, um, support the, the financial, um, obligations of, of this, these negotiations.
Yeah. What, what he's asking about is the $23 in the revised contract?
Yes. Oh, yes, it is. Okay.
Okay. Well, yeah, that's what I was, uh, making sure that we pass that, but should it also be listed in this? Because we're amending this, uh, ordinance that we passed, not only the salary ordinance, but the budget ordinance also.
No.
No? All right.
Any other comments?
Any other comments from the council? Seeing that there are none, Ms. Nyla, will you please read our fourth ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending municipal code section two dash four-five-seven, commission on the social status of African-American males. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And Ms. Tillman, is she online? Okay. She had a family emergency, uh, this evening, so we'll just put this one off till next meeting. Or did you want to? Okay. Yeah. Is there any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, I, I don't know if anybody else, uh, knows the answer to this, but I just wanted to clarify. I know there was an email that followed up to talk about there might be three people or so that would be affected by this. Um, and I was trying to figure out.
If you look at the very last sentence, or third last, it says this amendment shall only be effective for all appointments made after the date of this ordinance becomes effective. So it does not affect any current member.
All right, perfect. So just when new ones come on, that they didn't have to be residents of the city?
They have to be Michigan City residents.
Okay, thank you. Perfect.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, because, uh, yeah, after watching the, the meeting, when I saw the meeting, uh, it, it didn't allude to this. Uh, so, okay, Ms. Nyla, uh, would you read the, any other council comments? Seeing that there are none, you read the first ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating section two dash four-one-two and chapter two of the Michigan City Municipal Code to create a CDBG fund to receive funding awarded to the city from HUD through the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Cares Act. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Simmons, and Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
And do the authors have anything they had to see?
Yes. Um, this is, um, more of, um, just a process, um, thing that we have to do to make sure that they can, uh, have a line item to be able to expend the money. I'll be asking for, um, third reading, um, on this as well tonight. Um, but again, it's just more of a formality.
Do the, any other off, other authors have anything to add? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Online comments from the public? Done? Comments from the council?
I move that we do third reading, um, on this ordinance.
Second.
Ms. Nyla, there's been a motion and a second on the vote, please.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, and there will be a formal public hearing on this? We're moving to the third, right? You don't need it now? Nope? Okay. Oh, yes, right, right. Okay, Ms. Nyla, will you, uh?
I'll read it on third reading?
Yep, read it on third reading, please.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating section two dash four-one-two and chapter two of the Michigan City Municipal Code to create a CDBG fund to receive funding awarded to the city from HUD through the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Cares Act. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Simmons, and Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Anything from the office? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Public comments are now closed. Any comments from the council?
I'd like to make a motion, um, to adopt. Second.
Ms. Nyla, there's been a motion and a second on the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Ms. Nyla, will you please read the second ordinance on second, on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Michigan City Transit of the Michigan, of the General Fund to fund remaining expenses for two thousand twenty-one. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Simmons, Ms. Tillman, and Ms. Jagus.
And do the office have anything to add this evening?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dowd?
Um, so after the formal public hearing, I'll ask for third reading on this, too. Um, this was the, uh, the ordinance where, um, we, the Michigan City Transit Department was funded, um, by the cares money from April twenty-twenty through October of two thousand twenty-one this year. Um, and all the money has been expended. So this is to cover the remainder, uh, remaining part of the budget for this year, um, which is in the amount of three, three hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars, uh, from the general fund, um, for the Michigan City Transit Department for two thousand twenty-one.
Do any of the other offices have anything yet? Comments from the public? This one, then. Okay. There will be a formal public hearing on this one also. Any comments from the public? Got one online?
Hi, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen-sixteen Ohio Street. I think we need to modernize our transit system a little bit. Our, our four bus routes, they should have a GPS system on, 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 on the four routes. You know, you should be able to look up on a transit app. It'll tell you exactly where the bus is at in the city, and it'll tell you down to the minute right when the bus is going to arrive at your stop. The other thing, there should be a mobile pay app for, for, for the buses. This is what all the new bar and other cities have now. You should be able to buy, be able to buy a mobile, your monthly pass instead of going to the controller's office and buying your paper pass for twenty dollars. And if you're just doing a single ride, you should be able to just tap your phone and, uh, and be able to ride the bus wherever you're going in the city. You know, times have really changed since, uh, Look magazine named Michigan City and All-America City back in nineteen sixty-six. So we, uh, need to emerge from the dark ages. And I'm also really happy to see that Councilman Michael Mack and Councilmember Angie Nelson-Dietrich is about to receive their Christmas wish and continue to be the redevelopment commish. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Uh, any other comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yes, yes. Yeah. Formal public hearing is now closed. Uh, comments from the council?
Um, I move to, um, um, I move to move this to third, um, reading.
Second.
Ms. Nyla, there's been a motion and a second on the vote, please.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Um, Ms. Nyla, would you read the same ordinance on third reading? Title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Michigan City Transit of the General Fund to fund remaining expenses for two thousand twenty-one. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Simmons, Ms. Tillman, and Ms. Jagus.
And do the office have anything they had to see? Are there anything? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Public comments are now closed. Comments from the council?
I, I move to adopt.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Nyla, on the vote, please.
Mr. Paul?
Oh, oh, was the, Paul had his question.
I have a question for, uh, the, uh, uh, controller. How much, uh, money, how much money did this, uh, CARES Act money save us last year for their, uh, budget? And how much did we save this year out of the general fund, uh, use, getting this CARE Act money up until, like, like, what is this, uh, funding for the, uh, fourth quarter?
Yeah, I, I believe the total grant was just over two million dollars.
So how much was, did we save from portion of this year and last year out of the general fund?
I believe we spent maybe just over a million dollars last year and then the, the other million dollars this year.
Okay, so it's saved us a million last year and a million this year. So that was extra money in the budget out of, out of the tax draw, correct?
It, it was, it was left in the unappropriated balance, correct?
Unappropriated balance. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? We already did a motion and a, Ms. Nyla, on the vote, please?
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, Ms. Nyla, will you read the third ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending section thirty-eight dash forty and section thirty-eight dash forty-one of the Michigan City Municipal Code to provide eligibility for the Promise Scholarship to all students who attend Michigan City area schools and creating section thirty-eight dash forty-two in the Michigan City Municipal Code to create two tiers of financial scholarship awards. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Tillman.
And do the authors have anything they had to see?
Yeah, uh, so with this, we were looking to, um, work on some stuff that the other ordinance that we actually adopted took care of. So I want to, uh, pull my sponsorship with this ordinance at this time.
Okay, so get Tracy back here, so. So we just let it come in this, and it's, the next thing? We still have to go through it. Okay, any, uh, any comments from, well, the other office is not here. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Online comments? Seeing that there are none, comments from the council? Councilman Don Prespolinski? Oh, Councilman?
Well, I, I know Councilwoman, uh, Tillman plans to pull her sponsorship, but I know she can be here tonight. So, um, I just wanted to state that. I did talk to her, though.
Thank you. And we are on to the fourth ordinance. Ms. Nyla, will you read the fourth ordinance on second reading by title only?
Okay, so we're holding this until the next meeting?
Yes.
All right. An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending section thirty-eight dash forty and section thirty-eight dash forty-one of the municipal code to provide eligibility for the Promise Scholarship to all Michigan City residents.
And do the office have anything they had to see?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dowd?
Um, I move that we be, um, I, I move to amend, uh, by replacing in its entirety the document that you all received last week. Is that the correct way to say it, um, Turney Meyer?
You're moving to amend by substitution?
Yes, thank you. I could, my, I had a brain fart there, so I'm sorry. Um, anyway, um, I move to amend by substitution. I didn't, I can't believe I said that out loud. Anyway. But I, I, I move to amend by substitution.
Support. There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Nyla, on the vote, please?
Hold on. Got to get rid of Tracy. Mr. Dabney?
And you got it last week.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Did you say aye?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
The amendment was passed by eight to zero.
Councilwoman Dowd?
All right. Um, so this is on second reading. Um, so this is, this was sent out, um, last week. I did, um, at the last council meeting, give some bulleted, um, I, um, items to you all, but this was sent, sent out by the clerk's office last week, so that you would have, um, a little time to review. But I, I will point out the highlights, um, from it. Um, so this is to, um, provide, uh, the Promise Scholarship eligibility to, um, renters and to, um, homeowners. And, um, it also codifies, uh, a lot of the information that was in the PowerPoint presentation, um, from two thousand sixteen that was always just an exhibit. Um, so the highlights of it is that, um, homeowners, um, will still have the same process except for now, um, it doesn't go back to junior high. It starts at ninth grade, ninth through twelfth grade. Um, but also, um, allows renters to, to be able to access the same information. I mean, same, um, scholarship, um, as well. And it also, um, puts in a, um, some clarifying language, um, on people who move out of the city, um, that if they move outside of the city, um, they will no longer be eligible for, um, the scholarship, um, if they're enrolled in school and they leave. And it also, um, allows students to complete their study, studies in six years versus, um, five years because we know that, um, if students are only taking twelve credits, if, you know, the minimum credits, full-time credits, that it would take a little bit longer to complete. Um, the other thing that, um, I would say, too, is that we did, we say, see some information from, um, our Promise Scholarship Director. Um, I appreciate you, um, providing the information. I know that everybody received, uh, a, uh, copy, but it talked about, um, we have, you know, who would be eligible for, um, Promise Scholarship from Marquette High School. Their total enrollment is two hundred twenty-nine students. Um, they have sixty-two students in their senior class, and there are twelve, um, twelve residents in Michigan City that will be eligible for the money. Um, the other question that came up from one of the council members, um, do the, the choice voucher students receive free tuition, um, or do they pay to attend Marquette High School? And the choice amount is, um, ninety percent that they receive. Uh, Marquette receives, the Michigan City area schools re, receives ten percent, but those families are still on the hook for over twenty-nine hundred dollars for, um, tuition. Um, also, um, asked for the number of Michigan City students that attend other high schools, um, public high schools here. Um, and Chester, right now, as what we've received so far, Chesterton High School, we have thirteen students in grades nine through twelve. Laporte High School, forty-eight students. And Westfield High School, ninety-four students. And we haven't heard back from New Prairie. So I just want to make sure that, um, we understood the numbers. Um, hopefully, we can get those students back into the system. Um, but, um, just for the information of, of the public, that's kind of where we're at. Thank you.
Councilman Don Prespolinski?
Yeah. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch, could you read those numbers again?
Yes. So, um, attending, um, Chesterton High School, we have thirteen, um, Michigan City residents in grades nine through twelve. Laporte High School, forty-eight. Westfield High School, ninety-four. And Marquette, um, twelve.
Yeah. What'd you say? You said you had New Prairie on there, too, then?
New Prairie does, we still wait.
Oh, waiting for your back. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other comments from the office?
No.
Councilman Paul Prespolinski?
Well, I, I would, uh, I would have to say that with the, uh, information that Angie, excuse me, Councilwoman Deitch read into the record that the, uh, Councilwoman Deitch read into the record that the, uh, I, I don't, I think it displaces the validity in arguments that this is having a negative effect on our public schools. Um, I think maybe that it, uh, goes to the reverse of that, that people are having the choice, are going outside of the Michigan City school area. And I, I will say that, uh, you know, I, I don't see any of the argument that was made before that puts any validity in not passing this. I think that we need, we should, uh, move forward and, uh, and I appreciate the fact that we got the, uh, lot of the, uh, s- uh, stuff, the language off, off of the, uh, exhibit in, into the, uh, kind of into the ordinance, so it, it's actually a, a legal document. There's no, you know, if, ands, or, or buts about it. I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Deitch on that, and also did, uh, did, uh, the city attorney or did, uh, did Ms. La- Ms. LaPage, uh, work on that?
Yeah, yeah, so I, I ran, I actually met with, um, city attorney Amber LaPage Staubrink, um, multiple times and, uh, went back and forth with, um, attorney Jim Myers, so they both reviewed it. Um, a few changes did happen after, um, talking with, um, the city attorney to make sure that we didn't put ourselves in, um, pickle, because she would have to, quite frankly, um, work with, um, Mrs. Buton to make sure we, we follow, um, the process.
Okay, thank you. Thank, and I want to thank Jim, uh, Myers, and I've talked to him several times beforehand when we first got into this and, um, uh, attorney Amber LaPage for, uh, working this thing out. Thank you.
Any other comments from the authors? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Online comment? Comments from the council? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah. Uh, real quick, I'm not going to support anything that allows, uh, the payment of our scholarship to go out to Marquette. Um, we have current numbers of the people who are attending Marquette who would be eligible, but it does not look into the future to see how many could actually leave the school system, uh, to go over to Marquette, um, that would then be eligible, which would then take seventy-five or seventy-one hundred dollars a student out of Michigan City area schools with each student that could leave and go into the private schools. And this also comes into play at the lower levels because it's going to start as of a ninth grader. We used to have where you would have to be in the Michigan City area schools as of a seventh grader. So now even at junior high, middle school level, those students could leave Michigan City area schools as well and once again, take that money along with them. Um, the way I saw this and would wish this would happen is that we would form a committee of council members, people from Michigan City area schools, if they wanted to bring someone from Marquette as well, to get into a room and sit down and talk about all of these different things and, and, and how we could work this out. Uh, but once again, I'm not in favor of anything that would allow money or that would open up a gateway for students to leave the Michigan City area school system and still be paid, uh, the Promise Scholarship money. And, um, I have a wow coming out of the, out of the crowd right there, but that's typical. Um, but I would not be in support of anything that would be able to pay out to Marquette, uh, students because, once again, they would be taking, uh, headcount out of the Michigan City area school system. And if you know the funding model of our school system, uh, the way it works in Indiana, you're funded to pay your staff and your teachers strictly on headcount. So as you lose students at any level, you're losing funding into the, the school system, which then you cannot pay teachers and staff. Um, and I think this coming in the future, it was going to be a slow crawl of people that would be leaving Michigan City area schools. Um, so I can't support that, uh, as a city councilman. Uh, I do think it is part of my duty to look out for Michigan City area schools, so that's where I stand.
Councilwoman Jakes?
Yeah, I also have a couple of comments, uh, regarding that. So no impacts have been measured on what this is going to do to Michigan City area schools. This is just to see if we can give away, you know, more money to residents and to renters. And I'm all for renters, I'm all for residents, as long as they attend Michigan City area schools. We need to boost our schools and support our schools, and I'm frankly shocked that ninety-four of our students who live in Michigan City attend Westville. Now, are they going to be eligible because they live in Michigan City? That's what I'm saying. So, oh, no, only those two high schools, but like, like I say, I don't know why we're including Marquette because we don't know what the demographic shift is going to be for that, so I also am very worried about that and I would like to do more to support our school.
Councilwoman Deitch?
Um, a couple of things that I'll, I'll just add, um, um, in, in regards to that, um, as a a homeowner. Um, so, um, Marquette is a part of our community, whether we want to admit it or not. They're right here in the heart of Michigan City. I had a daughter that graduated from Marquette and I have a daughter that graduated from Michigan City area schools, and I support both schools. Uh, my kids are different in how they learn. Um, so, it, you know, it was important that, um, I had a, an option for my daughter and, uh, and I worked two jobs for that. I didn't get a voucher. Um, so as a homeowner, um, I feel like as a council member that my obligation is to all residents here in Michigan City, period. And, um, and I will say for the renters, um, I know that, um, you know, we said that we were, you know, the, the council that passed it said this, this would be reevaluated and that's why it was brought to the table so that we can get this going. So when I look at, um, Chesterton, Laporte and Westfield, we're talking over a hundred and fifty students that we might get back. Um, many of these people are renters in some cases, and maybe we'll get those renters back to Michigan City High School, um, because they, they go there for free. Um, so maybe we'll, we'll, we'll see a tide turn, but we won't know until we try. We have the money, um, there, uh, but until we try, um, that's going to be our impact study. We got to see what's going to happen. Um, and, and that's why it's on the table, so I, I would say, I will hope that everybody will support it. Um, and I understand people's feelings if they don't, but, um, I'm a strong advocate of Michigan City area schools and, and, um, they all know that, so, um, I, I want this to be the best school system that we can have in that we, you know, I don't want people to send their, their kids outside of the, the city to go to school. Um, I want them to be here, so, um, um, I just, uh, just want to state those, those facts.
Councilman, uh, who are we at? Uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Oh, yeah, um, it's not, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Councilman Paul Prespolinski?
Well, to clarify, um, some things that were said already, that, uh, in, uh, section thirty-eight forty-two, paragraph A, in specific, the, the specific language says graduates of Michigan City and Marquette High Schools. There's not going to be anybody outside of Michigan City being able to, to take, uh, or participate in this scholarship program. It clarifies it in that language. But also, I think with the numbers that were given tonight, it's, we have thirteen students that are qualifying, that could qualify if they want to, uh, if they want to, at Marquette. So I think the real essence of the discussion is we're not taking a hundred and fifty-five students and that's the total. These people made a choice for a reason, but, but as Councilwoman Deitch said, maybe these people will come back to participate in this program. And the, I see it, see, I'm looking at this as a tool to make it more attractive for people to come, come and qualify for a scholarship in Michigan City. So, I mean, you can make the argument that, uh, the, uh, school system is being hampered, but it's certainly not by this scholarship program. There, there's, there's like, I, I mean, a hundred and fifty-five students and we still have data to be collected outside of our system. So, uh, I personally think that this is a good program and that we've identified the renters, we've identified clarif- clarification of the language on who will qualify. There's not going to be any people outside this system being eligible. You have to be going to high school in the city and, I mean, it's, it's very simple, so need to ask yourself is what can we do to bring these students back to Michigan City High School as a vehicle? And I think that this is a vehicle to do that in that maybe there, maybe the school system needs to use it as an outreach. I'm not saying that you're going to have a hundred and fifty-five students, uh, enter into Marquette because I don't know if they can handle that, that, but it's being optimistic. So I think that, you know, I, I, I know that, um, people, people have their perspective and I think you need to look at it in a different perspective to use it as a positive tool to bring, bring people back into the system. Thank you.
Okay, I, I'll just add a, I had, well, I had another. Yeah, I'm not going to close it out. Just going to jump mine in right now. Um, we heard a lot of speak, people speak on this issue and, uh, I can't recall one teacher, educator or administrator, uh, in our public school system that, uh, thought that having the city, um, interject on the state school versus parochial private schools argument and the way that Indiana funds them was something that could possibly be advantageous to their, uh, situation as educators because it's directly, their funding has nothing to do with Michigan City's city council. Their funding for teachers comes directly from headcounts. If you got ten thousand students, you get this money. If you got two thousand students, you get this money. And, uh, some of the smaller, uh, rural areas are really, really hurting bad, uh, because people have moved out of those areas. Now, the whole premise of the Promise Scholarship was to encourage residency. So it was to encourage someone that doesn't live in Michigan City to move to Michigan City, thereby increasing our residency, our tax base, and a student in our school system. Uh, the three or four distinct issues that are totally separate, that totally, they, they, they have nothing in common and that's our residency rules and our ability to create a program that attracts new residents to Michigan City to live here, distinct, separate. Uh, family funding of colleges, uh, and I am a ridiculous advocate of college, high school, after that trade schools, any way we can ed- educate people. Um, but family funding of colleges, that's what this program is doing. We're funding Michigan City residents, uh, children that are eligible, uh, college. And then school funding. School funding has absolutely nothing to do with any of this. It is one hundred percent headcount mo- motivated. And this seems like we are, that this program of, of allowing a resident in Michigan City to take his child to any of the other schools, because the variables that make a parent not choose Michigan City when they already live here, so they're going to get the five thousand dollars, uh, because they live here under this, under this. But the, the reason to choose Michigan City area schools over any of these other schools, there is no reason. You're going to get the five thousand, that, the, a child that lives in Michigan City that wants to go to Westfield High School will be able to get the five thousand and go to Westfield. Correct? No?
No.
No.
You're way out there.
I'm going to read it.
Let me.
If they, if they live in Michigan City and go to, just to Michigan City School, so it's just Marquette, okay? Okay, now I thought this was even more information, but still the Marquette piece. The funding is the mechanism, uh, that our school needs, so it won't be all of the other schools, but it will be, it will be the Marquette High School. So, so, uh, Councilman Don Prespolinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and just a few, just a few comments. And we all have our different opinions on this, uh, subject, okay? And all it is, to me, it's a, uh, decision being made for the residents, for the students of Michigan City, and just as this document says, this is for the repres- residents of Michigan City. It's not for children, you know, whether you live on the south side, north side, east side, or whatever. It's for the residents of Michigan City, and that's the way I'm looking at this. I'm looking at it as taxpayer, someone that, taxpayer that funds the school system and a resident that lives here. When this program started back, I believe it was twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, yeah, okay, thank you. That's why I was looking at you, uh, give me the head nod. Anyway, I was on the council at that time, and even at that time, I thought that this should be widened out to include the, uh, parochial schools, but I was, I was voted down and we did it as a trial basis. Well, here we are, taking it to the next level. And it started with the rental, uh, possibilities, which I think is great, and we're going to get that. I also thought it's good to let the residents, that if they decide to go to Marquette, that they should be able to participate in the program if they qualify, two-point-five grade point average, the whole, uh, ball of wax. Now, that's where I'm at with that. If you're a resident, you're taxpayer and you qualify with the rental process, then you should be able to get it if you go to Marquette and if you go to the public high school. Now, the issue with the funding mechanism and with the numbers that we got, uh, with my quick math, uh, it looks like the school system is losing approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year while these students go into Laporte, New Prairie. We don't even know what New Prairie's numbers are because we don't have that. So could be, it could be close to a million dollars. So I don't think that the city funding approximately right now, when next year would be possibly six students at Marquette, is going to make that big of a difference in the big scheme of things. Uh, what should be going after is trying to get these hundred and fifty-five students back to Michigan City and why they're not in Michigan City, so they can get that funding back. Instead of worrying about maybe sixty thousand over here, I'd rather worry about the three quarters of a million dollars over here, and you notice folks that. Okay, uh, and in reading this education fund overview that Ms. Buton gave us, uh, the city of Hammond, the city of Hammond, when they started their program, whether you go to school in Chicago, high school, whether it's a public high school, whether you go to Catholic High School, whether you go to Bishop Knoll, whether you go to Hammond High, wherever you go, they fund that student if they're qualified to be in their. you go, they fund that student if they're qualified to be in their scholarship program. So, they don't have any boundaries uh with, with that. And I commend them for that. And according to this study, what we got, the population of Hammond has increased ten thousand people since they started their program. So, I think by us expanding, and this is just a, to me, a trial basis, let's see, we'll see where we're at, you know, in three or four years. And uh if we have to make adjustments to it, we can do that. But I think we need to think out of the box, give more residents, more teenagers, the opportunity to get this money because right now there is three point two million dollars sitting in the bank to fund this program. And with the twenty students that participate in this program every year, that's what we have, there's twenty students uh in, in each class, yeah, that are participating in this program. Uh, that money will be there for a long, long time. So, I'm in full support of this and just wanted to express my opinion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, and then talking about the incentive to bring these students that are listed, that are going to Chesterton, Laporte, and uh Westville to bring them back. The whole reasoning and logic behind it, behind this, what they're talking about is that if they're rentals, if they're all renters, right? Um, because if they're homeowners and they've decided to go to Westville, they have no reason to come back. It would be if they're a renter. So, they're assuming that they're renters. Now, I'm more in favor of at this point uh bringing or seeing this number thirteen forty-eight ninety-four and see what we get from New Prairie. How many of those people have leaked out from Trail Creek, from Cool Spring Township, and places like that? Those aren't uh civil city, but in my mind, in the way I think about this, from working in a finance office at a school system for two years, um, I really want to go after the people who are attending Michigan City area schools. Um, yeah, as, as you can see, I, I carry the flag for the Michigan City area public schools. And I would like to see as many people come back into the school system because I know how it's funded. I know what it's like to leak out students to a private school and then have these teachers sitting around at the end of the year, waiting to see if we're going to have enough money in order to, to bring them back. Um, because I think it's, it's creating a gateway for people to be able to leave the public schools. And that's just where I stand. Uh, obviously, I disagree with just about everybody else on the council and that's okay. I mean, we, we can all express our opinions. Uh, but in my mind, I want to see the most support that we can do for the Michigan City area schools, um, because I know how important it is with the public schools. Public schools take everybody. Uh, Marquette has entrance exams and, and things of that sort. So, they'll get the cream of our crop. Uh, they won't take the others, they'll leave those over in Michigan City area school. Um, so, that's where I stand on it. Obviously, I disagree with everybody else, that's fine. Um, thank you.
Any other comments uh from the council? Um, Ms. Nalib on the vote, please? We did, have we done?
Three.
Wrong. We're done, okay. Okay, we're gonna.
Waiting, I'm first reading. You wanted to go with this?
Next week?
That's nice.
Onto new business. Uh, the council has two appointments to the redevelopment commission. Uh, incumbents are Angie Nelson Deitch and Michael Mack. Approval of twenty twenty-two council meeting dates. Do we have a comment on that or any? It's going to be new business, the Councilman Dabney?
No, we have to make a, make a motion to approve. I'd make a motion to approve the meeting dates if that would be doing.
Yep. Swing a motion in a second. Ms. Nalib on the vote, please?
Uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preslinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preslinsky?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, and the council's youth leadership commission is uh still under work. And we're down to comments from the public. Comments from the public? Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Rodney, Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street.
Um, he's talking about the school stuff and Mr. Dabney's comments that don't ever go ignored. Um, I thank God that we have a right for choice. I thank God that we have, every day we have a choice where we send our kids to school at. I put my kids on the South Shore and they went to Theo Bowman Leadership Academy, leaving Michigan City High School for certain reasons. I even sent one down to Indianapolis. I have one in get, in Detroit right now going to school. Um, residents shouldn't be, you shouldn't punish residents because they decide to send their kids to somewhere else. And if we adopt Mr. Dabney's philosophy or Mr. Max or any other council member up there that's on this kick, if you take your kids out of school, out of Michigan City schools, you shouldn't get no money. So, we should te- adopt that philosophy and share it on city workers and police officers. If you don't live here, we should let them work here. We shouldn't pay them either. At some point, you need to cut the nonsense. If, if the parents live here and they send their kids to school and we are encouraging them and helping them get to a better place in far as it goes as education, that's what we need to do. I'll speak about that later on next week. Um, I'm here now as a commissioner uh from the Housing Authority. For all of you guys who don't know, there's a very important meeting that will happen four o'clock Thursday at the, uh, Michigan City Housing Authority Building. Um, after my, after I was sworn in as commissioner, I discovered that the city was in a contract that they had no idea that they were in. Um, I don't know why that was not told to the mayor or the president or the city council, but I, I blew the whistle and I showed and told them everything that's going on. It's important that you guys show up at this meeting and see what's really going on. Um, after I was put in, I started noticing a lot of problems with, with family members being hired and put in positions. Uh, it's sad what's going on up there. Once we asked for the annual contracts and some other things, um, our board president decided to let it go into receivership as opposed to give the informa- the requested information that we asked for. And just one of the biggest outrageous things I've seen, one of the biggest outrageous things I've seen was that some of these board members, they get on here, they lived out in the county when they first got on the board. Residency is important. There's a reason for it. And one of the board members that was on there, that's been on there for twenty-two years, in order for her to get on there, she used the address, uh, four oh five Thomas Street. But she lived out in the county. I couldn't understand why. I'm just telling you, before you start letting anybody on these boards, please check their residency, that, check them, see what's going on because a lot of these people, they don't want to do the things it takes to sit on these boards. And now the city, the citizens of the Housing Authority are suffering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Uh, any other comments from the public?
Ernie Holland, Michigan City, three oh two Gladys Street. I, I happened to hear on the, the news of one oh five out of Alborazo that we're going to be getting new uh housing apartments at Eighth and Michigan Boulevard on the corner there, they said. I don't know which corner it is, but that's, that's pretty promising, I think, if we're going to get something like that. But that was on one oh five news in, in Valparaiso.
Any other comments from the public? Online comment?
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. First, I just wanted to update the council that the honorary street sign that Councilman Brian Dabney had requested for, for Millie Jenkins has now been installed at, at Grayson Holiday Street. And that was a very nice thing that he did for, for, for her mom and their family. So, I really want to thank them for that. And the thing is a very special announcement, tickets are on sale at the Michigan City High School Athletic uh, uh, office for the semi-state game on uh Friday night. Uh, ten dollar tickets. Uh, they're going to be taking on Zionsville. I think there is a real interesting sidebar to that because this was probably about twenty-five years ago, Zionsville is the town that Michigan City lost the Miss Indiana pageant to. That's where, where they have it now. We've had, we had it here for decades and they kind of uh took it away from us. So, I hope they don't take this uh, this state finals berth away from us Friday night. I just want to let everybody know, should they be successful on Friday night, be sure to buy your uh tickets in advance for the state final. We go Black Friday shopping down Lucas Oil Stadium for a state championship because there, the tickets are going to be fifteen dollars, but the, 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 if they buy them at the school in advance, the school, the athletic department gets to keep a dollar for every ticket sold. So, our, our athletic department, we always need every dollars we can get. So, I just want to wish the team good luck and, you know, the, I want to thank all the businesses for getting all their signs up, like to see more. It's, it's a great display of school spirit and school pride and civic pride and civic spirit. So, you know, you know, go Wolves, let's do it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any other, oh, uh, we got one inside, uh.
Oh, hi, I'm Judy Kowal. My last name is K O W A L. I live on the east side of town. Gene Simmons is my councilperson and I know I've sent you all an email concerning getting an ordinance to stop the trains from blowing their whistles within the city limits. And I've lived out there in that area uh for nineteen years now. I lived just over the line in Michiana Shores for several years. So, I've been there thirty-five years and I live a block and a half from the Amtrak track and it's, it's like a gunshot when the train comes through. You're sitting there and I worked at home for years, even before it was fashionable to work from home. And I have to stop talking to people because the train, all of a sudden, you're there and all of a sudden kaboom, you know, the horn blows. And there's other cities like uh Whiting for one, Mishawaka, Laporte's working on an ordinance, they have an ordinance that prohibit trains from blowing their whistles within the city limits. And the Mishawaka attorney I talked to years ago told me they're really not whistles anymore. They're electronically enhanced signaling devices. And, you know, we've all ridden the South Shore and, you know, when you're waiting there for the South Shore, the train blows its whistle, then you, that's your signal to go to the train. That's originally why trains blew their whistles is to tell you it's, you know, arriving so you can get on it. But I don't know why they blow them now because if you have gates and lights and you're in your car, you know, you have the radio on or you're talking to somebody, you don't hear it anyway, but it's very disturbing and we're talking about things that make Michigan City a nice place, like, you know, having nice trees and nice schools. When I'm driving around downtown, like along the railroad tracks there, I think, oh, this would be nice, you know, maybe then I get older, I want to move closer into town, but then all of a sudden the train comes blasting through with the horn. So, it would just be one thing that would make the city a nicer place to live.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Any comments from the council? Councilman Paul Preslinsky?
I uh, I too would like to uh give my uh thoughts on uh the Wolves playing that semi-state game up. Tom, I don't know if you're listening, but I'm going to try to make that game this Friday and um I, I have to give them, I'm congratulating them so far and wishing them well and hoping that we get some, a little bit better football weather. Um, also, I would like to thank um, you know, what it's called. Uh, I uh, I brought that up to the mayor earlier this year about looking into what we could do and I haven't heard any response to it about what we have to do at these crossings because it, it is all over town. And if you live in the center of town, you got, you have to deal with, you have to deal with the South Shore on eleven. You have to deal with the old um C and O tracks on Michigan Boulevard and the Amtrak uh up north, which goes through the east side of, or the west side of Michigan City. But also, I'd like to, I want to apologize to all the veterans that I did not thank them prior to Veterans Day and which used to be Armistice Day. And in nineteen fifty-four, I think they changed it to Veterans Day. And uh, you know, Indiana, a lot of people don't realize that Indiana has a huge and always has a huge amount of people serving in the military for its per capita. It, it's like second to, I think it's either second or third to some of your bigger states. So, Indiana always has been in, in the uh mix of things and you, one thing is we take a lot of things for granted, but don't, you cannot take for granted the sacrifice that people have made for us. To sit here and even enjoy the discussion, whether you're pro or con, is that's what people did for us. And it, it, it goes on and it, you know, dated back through history. And uh, you know, the uh founding fathers came here for uh mostly for the freedom of religion, the freedom to practice what you wanted, or if you didn't want to go to church. So, I think it, you need, we need to remember those things also, is that the freedom of choice, that's the big thing with freedom, is the freedom to choose your destiny. So, as we go forward, I hope people can remember that. And uh, I just, I, I, I'll tell you, I've been a, I've been out of the United States and I, I mean, you have to appreciate, or you don't have to, but reflect on what you have. That's all I can say is reflect in what veterans have done for us. So, next time you get a chance, think of that. Do something for a veteran. Thank you. Oh, and happy Thanksgiving.
Councilwoman Deitch?
Um, um, thank you, um, Councilman Paul, um, about Veterans Day and uh, um, yeah, we, time gets away from us uh with these meetings sometimes, but I um have a, you know, my son um is in the Air Force Department. I have a nephew in the Army and a nephew in the Navy. Um, husband retiree, brother, twenty-plus years as well, so I appreciate that. Um, also with the Michigan City Wolves, I agree. Um, you know, this is, it, it's been an interesting few years for the, the, the football team, but the council did the meal. I know this week the ministers are doing the meal. Um, we also have some small businesses that are providing the lunch on Friday. I'm going to give a shout out to them, Fluid Coffee, Jane Cake Flowers, Granny's House, um, a daycare, um, uh daycare center and uh JD Power Washing for providing the lunch on, on Friday. But um I also want to, um, this is something that's short order. Um, tomorrow, um, if people are in need of a Thanksgiving meal, there's Um, tomorrow, um, if people are in need of a Thanksgiving meal, there's a giveaway. Um, you have to be in your car though, um, at the McDonald's on Michigan Boulevard from eight to eleven AM. The Black McDonald's Operators Association is doing Food for the Body and Spirit and they do this annually at different locations. And this year, um, they're providing, and I think, I think the total is about seventy-five meals. And this will, um, it's only one per car. And, uh, so families in need to have a warm and, uh, prosperous holiday season is what it says. If you're a veteran, veterans who show proof of service will be recognized with the VIP, uh, line, so they get special privileges. If they have their, um, DD two fourteen or their, um, their ID, they move to the head of the line. Um, so, um, that's tomorrow from eight to eleven AM, um, or when they run out. But they will have turkeys and the trimmings to help families, um, for this holiday season. So, um, I just wanted to share that and to again, um, say happy Thanksgiving. Um, you know, a, as we, we reflect over the, uh, the last year and a half, um, or two years now, it feels like a lifetime with COVID. Um, you know, the numbers are going up again. Um, so we need to, you know, think about our loved ones. Um, you know, we had a lot of deaths. We had a lot of births that people had to do alone, um, because of COVID over this last year. So depression is a real thing. Anxiety is a real thing. Um, and I just wanted to encourage you to check on your loved ones. If there's someone you haven't talked to in a long time that you need to, to make amends with, you know, now is the time to think about that. Um, and, and, you know, I look forward to seeing my family next week. So, uh, again, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Councilwoman James?
I have a few things. First, I'd like to thank the redevelopment commission for their really hard work on three awesome projects that I saw yesterday at their meeting. Um, you know, the housing, the, the workforce housing situation is gonna be great. Uh, Burnham Brewery is going to expand and be right here in the city, which is wonderful. And also the, uh, station betterments, that was really wonderful, like all the work they did to, to this. So give them kudos. Uh, I attended two meetings this week that were pretty interesting. Uh, the coal combustion residual meeting with NIPSCO. Uh, it was Nancy Moldauer from the Sustainability Commission, um, myself, uh, and Representative Pat Boy met with NIPSCO and we just reviewed their plan, your plans for cleaning up the coal ash. And, uh, we got a lot of questions answered. They are going to be sending us some links, so I will be putting that on my website, dollyashigus.com. So if you want to take a look at some of the, uh, more intense information about that project, uh, please take a look at that. And also, uh, I've gotten involved with a group that we're working on something called, um, the Department of Energy Communities Leap Pilot, which stands for Local Energy Action Program. Uh, it's a, it's a program that's made just for us really because, uh, it's for sustained community-wide economic and environmental benefits primarily through the Department of Energy's clean energy deployment work. This opportunity is specifically open to low-income, energy-burdened communities that are also experiencing either direct environmental justice impacts or direct economic impacts from a shift away from historical reliance on fossil fuels. That's us. So under the Communities Leap Pilot, Department of Energy will provide supportive services valued up to sixteen million for community-driven clean energy transitions. So right now we have Ivy Tech in discussion with us, uh, the Sustainability Commission, uh, also Northwest Indiana Just Transition, and we are looking for maybe another council member or two to kind of join us to try to work on getting this grant. And it's not, and it's, uh, and the subject is gonna be green manufacturing. So how can we rethink manufacturing to be a more greener, you know, system? So like, we're gonna be training people in green manufacturing. I think it sounds really interesting and I think, uh, I think the Michigan City AK Smith Academy is also gonna be, uh, joining us as well. All right, and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Councilwoman Don Preslinsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items. Uh, the Michigan City Wolves, I attended the Valpo game on Friday night and it was a wild, wild finish. In fact, the whole game was kind of wild. Could have went either way, but I just want to congratulate the Wolves and want to encourage the community to get out this Friday night. Uh, it's not supposed to be rainy, might be a little chilly, but it's not supposed to rain. So if you got a couple hours, go out and have some fun and spend, I think Tommy said eight bucks. It went from six to eight bucks. So, uh, yeah, that, that'll be great and hopefully they can beat Zionsville. If they beat Zionsville, then they'll be playing Lucas Oil Field a week from Saturday. So that would be fan, that would be fantastic. So you gotta, you gotta cheer those young guys on, you know, to do that kind of stuff. Cause I mean, to do what they've done is a fantastic accomplishment. And, uh, along with, uh, other council members, uh, the veterans that may be in the audience tonight or watching tonight, uh, my heart goes out to them. Uh, fantastic, uh, job of going into service, defending our comp, our, our country and going through what you had to go through. Uh, I had a brother that served in the army. I never served in, in the services, but I had a brother that, uh, served in Vietnam. I want to thank him for that. And I also had, at one time, I believe it was either six or seven uncles that were in the army at one time. Uh, so I don't know if that was the family with the most people that served in the army at one time in World War Two, but there were seven of them in the army at the same time, or in the service at one time. Then one thing that, and after I looked at it, uh, in the paper and with Veterans Day and, and I've often thought about it, but I don't feel like I want to impose on anybody on what my particular feelings are as, as far as, uh, flying the American flag at your home throughout the city. Uh, you know, what, and, and I try to fly it as often as I can. Sometimes, you know, my wife tells me to bring it in because you can't fly it on this day or that day. But I just want to encourage people in Michigan City to really take pride in, in the American flag and, you know, to fly it at your home, fly it at your business and, and take pride in America and, you know, what America really stands for. Uh, to me, one of the most beautiful things is to see the American flag flying in the wind on, on a, any day, but especially on a nice, uh, sunny day. So I just want to encourage, uh, people in Michigan City to go spend, you know, a few bucks and buy a flag and buy a flag holder, put it on your house and fly it on certain days. And, you know, then again, some people may not want to do it for whatever, whatever their, uh, their reasons are. But I certainly want to, uh, encourage that. And everyone in Michigan City, everyone in the audience, happy Thanksgiving. Don't worry about this stuff here for, uh, you know, a couple of days. Just go enjoy your family and have some, uh, have some fun. That's what that stuff's all about. And then we'll get back to business after the holidays. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, um, I just wanted to, to echo the, the sentiments that were made by, um, Mr. Kalavich up there. He was talking about the signed dedication that we had over on Holiday and Grace. Um, real good event. I got a chance to be a part of and take part in, uh, signed dedication to a young woman that was shot and killed over there. And after that happened, he kept a memorial in that spot. Um, Millie Jenkins, um, young lady's name. And the family came to me and asked me if we could do something like that, looked into it and got that done. So last night we had the sign reveal right there on the corner of, of Grayson Holiday. Uh, the family was really happy. Mom's really happy. And, um, so it was something, uh, for first time in a long time, has made me smile dealing with, uh, city business and city council. And then to address something else, uh, he's on the phone right now, but he actually brought up an address, four oh five Thomas Street, talking about one of the, uh, board members for the housing authority. That's my house. Four oh five Thomas Street, uh, is my house. So he's referring to my sister who was a, a, a board member there. And I don't know when my sister was put on the board of that, but she did live with me for two to three years. Um, so I don't know the dates of when she was put onto that housing authority board, but the address he spouted out there, uh, was my address. That's my sister. She did live with me. Um, but, you know, some people choose to be, to be, how do I want to say? Messy like that. Um, yeah, that's what happens when, when people want what you have. Uh, when people want to be you, jealous of you. Uh, these are the type of things that come up. Um, so it's okay. But I just wanted to express that because I, I, I heard there was somebody uh, relative of someone here on the, the council was also commenting out there online as well. I just wanted to clear that up. Uh, but that, that address that was popped out there was my address. That was my sister, uh, that was being referred to. And, um, on a final note, and I talked about the comments, uh, once again about the promise scholarship. I wished, once again, that we could have all gotten into a room with a committee and talked it out because this is a big, big deal for Michigan City. Um, so the schools could be heard from and everything like that, but obviously that's not gonna happen. Um, so hopefully, hopefully, um, I am wrong in, in the fact that what they say that this brings more people in the, in the Michigan City schools, because that's what I want. I think I have a different way of doing it and they feel a, a different way about it. And I hope, in this case, I hope I'm wrong and that it does bring people in. I don't see that happening. Um, because I see it, it creates a, a pathway out of Michigan City area schools. But I hope, I hope I'm wrong because I know, like I said, the funding of how our school systems work and each student you lose, that's seven thousand dollars plus that leaves the, uh, the school system. So hopefully it all works out in the end.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes, I'd like to echo, yeah, everyone's comment on the Wolves. I'd like to congratulate them on winning the regionals. Uh, huge, huge win, uh, for the team, for the school, for the community. And, uh, I wish them all the good, all, all the good luck in the world, uh, this coming Friday. Uh, is, I think they're peaking at the right time. Uh, and I think that'll go a long ways. And in closing, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Uh, enjoy your families. Uh, family is everything.
All right, uh, last comment will be go Wolves, going to the Super Bowl. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.